Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, really glad you're here today.
We are so excited to have you today. We have a packed call. We have Colin and Julie here from our team. What's up you guys? Excited to see you here as always.
How's it going everyone?
And as you're coming in, let us know where you are in the world. We are so excited to have you spending this time with us today. This is a live call that we operate every single Thursday at noon Eastern US time. And it's an opportunity for all young living brand partners to get together and learn ways to work smarter, not harder to grow your business. Today, we're going to be talking about how you can work smarter, not harder, using challenges and Get Oiling. But before we get into that, we are going to share some really exciting updates to your Get Oiling user experience. So don't be shy, head over into the chat. We can't wait to hear from you. We have several live work reviews scheduled today as well. So we've got a lot to get into. I'm going to go ahead and along with the team, we're going to pop out a video and get into the slides that I've prepared for you today so that we can get into all of today's awesome content. So again, thank you so much for joining us. We are just, we're just so thrilled to have you here today. Lots of exciting stuff to share with you. And I do keep it coming in the chat. It's always awesome to see folks from coming in from all over the world. I see Canada, the Netherlands, Kansas City, Oklahoma. We are so thrilled to have you. Keep it coming. So today we are going to learn how to create and run challenges with Get Oiling. So what that will look like, we'll begin actually not with challenges, but we are going to take a look at the gorgeous elephant in the room, which is the new Get Oiling experience. Greg is going to share that with us. We're then going to get into what challenges are, how you can use them and how you can set up and run those challenges and Get Oiling. I'll show you where you can go for additional training and then of course, as always, we'll have live help and Q and A. So I'm going to go ahead and pop over to Greg here. You can take the share from me Greg and let us know about some of these exciting changes. If you've logged into Get Oiling recently, you've probably seen a really different view. So check this out.
Yeah, thanks Ashley. Yeah, excited to share this with you today. If you've logged in anytime this week, you've probably seen this updated experience. We've had a lot of comments from people. And just I wanted to go over some of the changes that we've made, some obvious, some not obvious and go through it. So you can get the most out of it and kind of learn about it a little bit more. So first of all, you can see, I mean, there's some familiar aspects to the screen, but there's also some changes as well. So this menu on the side is probably one of the biggest things that changed. So the menu sections now are collapsible. So you can click on the header to open and close them. And when you do have them all open, the menu scrolls independently of what you're working on. Previously, they would all scroll together, which could cause some problems when you're trying to navigate around. So this is, that's a nice little update as well as there's now a way to collapse it. If you're on a smaller screen and you want to make the most of your working space, you can click on that and it will just slide it over. You can click it to get it back as well. In some areas like the page editor and landing page editor as well, they'll do that automatically for you to, because they are kind of a full screen experience. So I'll leave that open for now as we look around. One of the other benefits to this change too is if you, if you do have a number of them and you know, these sections open, it will remember that. So previously it was just always all open and you know, could be a little bit overwhelming looking at all the menu items. This way you can just open the one that you want. But it will remember where you were at and which ones are open. So it won't always, you know, like go back to the top and all that now. So that can save you some navigational headaches there too. Another couple of changes. Just in the menu, we've got two new categories here, the store and the content library. We covered the store on training, I don't know quite, you know, several months ago. And all that does, it used to be under the website menu. And it was a link that would take you to what the items were in the store to set that up. And now that's its own menu with everything under here. For those of you who don't know, the store is, it's like a adding the traditional add to cart and checkout experience to your Get Oiling site. So it's, it's an add-on to the plan and you can click through and learn a little bit more about that if you'd like. But and then we also have the content library here, which moves, this used to be one item for videos, files and images under website. And save replies used to be under contact settings and then resource bundles was also under website. So we took all the like the the content, you know, creation type stuff and put that under this new category called content library to separate that out. Some of that didn't really necessarily belong with contacts. The other change in the menu here, we pulled blog up to website because they are very much related. And Zoom remains with events because they're also quite related as well. So those are, those are the menu changes, at least on the computer. So the other thing I want to show you is on a, if you have a mobile phone, there's now a, well, there used to be, it used to be on the other side, I guess. But so there's this bar icon over here that you click on if you're on your phone. The, the app is different. The app still has the menu, I think that pulls in from the left, but over here we have this one here and it's the same menu that I saw just a minute ago. It's just over here and it shows your name and photo. So on mobile, it's a slightly different menu, but it's more mobile optimized. So let me expand that out here. Some of the other little changes, you probably noticed that big floating help button that would pop up on every time you click is gone, but it's up here now. I should say it's moved, it's not gone. It's just we shrunk it a little bit and put it up here. Exact same menu. There used to be a help button that was kind of light and difficult to see. This has the same color, just shrinks it down and puts it up there as well. The other change you probably notice is if you have a profile picture loaded, you'll see that up here now. So it's more easy to identify what account you're working in. I know there's a lot of you who have more than one account. And this will help you more easily identify that. And you probably just saw that as I moused over, there's a little my account menu here that's got all the goodies in there that you might expect from a user menu and account menu. You know, you can change your contact info, change your photo, update payment. Determine the my team, let's you set up other logins to get to your account. If you have a virtual assistant, that sort of thing. And then some other account settings there as well. So those, that's kind of the overall navigational change. Now, one of the other, one of the other perks, I guess of this is we did make this so that no matter how big your screen is, it will fill it up. And one of the benefits of that is that all the font size now is slightly larger. You probably noticed that throughout the system if you've been using it this week. It is larger, which benefits, I think, you know, everybody. And we've tried to enlarge it throughout the system, even these graphs are a little bigger. You know, even as you make your screen bigger, it would, it'll reload some of those. So let me show you what this also means about using more screen space. So like if I go over here, let me go to the website pages, for example. This used to be in one column and it will still be in one column if your screen is small enough. But this is more like what it used to be, but now depending on how big your screen is, it'll go to two, three, four, however many columns that you have space for depending on your screen. So it will get bigger. I know this is quite wide, but I just wanted to show that and I'll shrink it back down here in a minute, but it does take advantage of the larger screen space if you have it throughout, really wherever it made sense, you know, contacts are the same way. So if you have a lot of contacts, it'll pop into multiple columns there for you. You don't have to, you know, scroll quite as much. We did some tidying up here of making these boxes all the same same size and all that. So lots of little niceties in terms of the user interface and just kind of some touches that were, were put on there. Another nice change is the, there's consistent navigation throughout. What I'll, what I mean by that is like, let me go into contacts and I'll click on, I don't know, this random, random contact here in our demo database. You'll see this little arrow up here. This, if you ever see this, this takes you back to the previous screen. I mean, you can also, of course, I always use your back button, but you know, on some devices that isn't as convenient. So there is a return button that will take you to the previous screen and throughout the system, like, you know, let's say what's going to edit a campaign and we edit, edit the messages here. You'll see that little arrow takes you back to the campaign list. When you're in here editing a message, you can go back and it goes back to the actual, you know, the campaign lists or the messages that are in there. So that navigation is throughout and that's something that people have commented on being very helpful and it's kind of common to see that, more common to see that in apps now as well. One other thing before I pop into campaigns, you probably noticed there's the paginator down here that previously used to be, you had to scroll all the way to the bottom to see it. Now it's fixed on the bottom of the screen. So you can easily, like if you need to jump through several pages in a row, you're like, not sure. It's always going to be in a consistent spot. So you don't have to scroll. It just saves so much time. We have also pulled out the sorting so that it's right at the top of the screen. Instead of under the filters button with the contact manager, another nice change there too. Now, if you're, if you are, if you're composing an email, here's another nice change I'll mention. The, both the save replies and the automations of stuff on automations have a little fine box. So if you just type something in there, it'll narrow it down, especially this is great for people who have lots of save replies like this demo account. You know, so if I type in the word template or whatever, it'll just pull up all those that have the temp, word template in there. That is anywhere you see a saved reply or an automation box like this. So that'll make it a little bit easier for you to find what you're looking for in that regard. And I want to show you some changes to the campaigns. There's more to this, but these are kind of like the highlights of everything. You'll probably find little nice touches throughout. And one big change with the campaign or a couple of big changes with the campaign editor that'll do, I think, make it easier to use. There, you know, this is all pretty much the same here, but one, one item now is when you're editing a message, you can, there's a go-to message button up here and you can just jump to another message right away. If you want to jump to that without having to go back to the list and navigate around. So you can save rechanges, go to another message right away. And some of the common actions, you'll see this also throughout, there's this common toolbar at the top that shows up and lets you, you know, it's just consistent spot. You can see up here, copy settings and it's all there instead of being kind of sprinkled throughout. So the, the campaign and the other change to campaigns too, I want to point that out now in the message, you can also send, edit the sending day, whether it sends by email or text and then like a delay if it's, you know, for example, a day one, I can change the sending time and all that. So that is a nice addition to the campaign editor. And one other nice touch here, I think the last one I'll cover here, since I know we've got a lot going on today. When you're editing classes, you can add them to a vault and see, you can edit the vault, view the vault that they're in and add them to new vaults as well as, you know, just add them right from here. So that's something you can do. You can also do that inside when you're editing a class. There's a way to make it available in specific bolts and just add them right there instead of having to go into the vault and add them. So they, those are, those are some of the changes. Overall, it's just kind of a nicer, easier, more up to date look and feel with consistent navigation and hopefully it's, you find it helpful. If you run in, run in anything that you see might be a little off, let us know. There's always some little thing here and there, but we'd be happy to take a look at it and hopefully this helps you with your business and I'll turn that back over to you actually here.
Awesome. Thank you for that, you guys. I hope you get in and poke around, take a look at the exciting stuff that is available to you inside of your Get Oiling system. So let me get back to, here we go. Let me find my share here and get that back to you guys. I'm so excited to get into this topic today. It's been a long time since we have shared this. So let's get into it. So as I mentioned before, we're talking about how to create and run challenges. Let's talk about how to use them, set them up and get into some additional training as well as of course, as always, life help and Q and A. So if you have any questions about anything, regardless of whether it pertains to these awesome new updates or today's topic of discussion, feel free to add those to the Q and A if you haven't done so already. And if you happen to be watching this in the future, if you're watching this from our Facebook group right now where we're streaming, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to join one of these calls live and take advantage of the opportunity to be the first to see what we are putting out there for you, the training that we're creating. And then of course, have the opportunity to work together one-on-one. And if you would like to set aside dedicated space, like several folks have chosen to do today, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview to sign yourself up for that. And if you are working on anything in your system and you'd like to get it done faster, maybe hand it off to an expert who can handle it for you, getoiling.com/conceilers is where you want to go. That's where you can learn about all of the incredible things that our qualified team can do for you. Now head over into the chat and let me know, have you ever participated in a challenge? I want to hear some challenge stories here. Not necessarily if you have held one, you feel free to say that if you have, but what kind of challenge have you been a part of? And what did it do for you? I'm currently part of a daily yoga challenge, right? Where they, I have a couple of yoga classes online to choose from that I can try to factor into my day. This particular one is for busy people as I am. And so they're 15, 20 minutes long and that allows me to get in just a little bit of that movement and start building that habit. What does yours look like? What are you doing or what have you done as a challenge? Amanda has done Ningxia Red. Awesome. That's a really great challenge. Fantastic. Keep it coming in the comments because we are going to be talking about how we can integrate product into challenges, but product isn't the main point of a challenge unless it's for your customers. We will talk about that here in just a bit. There's a feelings kit challenge, aroma reset, aroma boost. Awesome. Oh, this is great. Part of an Instagram reels challenge for our shop. Awesome. It got you less scared of posting every day. Social media challenges are really powerful, especially to make sure that we are getting into the right activity with promoting and getting visibility. Fantastic. Keep those coming, you guys. So when you think about the challenge that you are a part of, do you remember what the objective might have been? Right? So the example that I've provided for the yoga challenge that I am currently taking part of is to insert some amount of yoga practice into my everyday life. Right? So that's the objective. You're too busy. You can't make it all the way to the studio. What do you do? Here's how you get 15 minutes in. So it's building a habit. The objective is building a habit of more yoga in my case. So what is the objective for the challenges that you've participated in? What's the outcome? Right? So we're thinking about that because this is going to factor into what we do next. And then ultimately, what was the result? What did you get out of the challenge you participated in? Right? I'm still in the process of mine, but obviously I'm getting all of the benefits of yoga, but I'm also starting to see more flexibility and expansion capable in my schedule where I didn't believe it existed previously. And that does a lot for your mental health, right? And certainly because it's yoga, it does a fair amount for your physical health as well. So let's talk about challenges. Why would we even bother running one? Because it is work, right? All right. So there's basically two categories of challenges that you're going to want to run. One is very customer specific. That's going to be something that's going to build product habits, right? So they're going to be able to discover new young living products and then develop new product habits. So a Ningxia challenge, which a lot of us are very familiar with, that's going to get you into the habit of drinking one to two ounces of Ningxia a day, right? That is a very important product habit, not only for you to have, but for your customers to have as well. Now for your leads, you want to build trust and credibility. If you are offering a challenge that anyone, not just young living people can be a part of, then you are offering a challenge that allows people to get to know you better and to see what you know as something that can help them, which means that they're more likely to trust you when you make a young living recommendation to them, right? And then finally, we're able to expose them to young living products in context with their goals, which is really important because we want to make sure that we aren't just putting product out there because we sell it. We're putting product out there so that people can see, oh, that actually could be a tool that supports the achievement of my goal. Bear with me for a second. Clearly I am having vocal challenges today. Lots of ginger tea. All right. So what is in a challenge? First, we have a stated objective. What will this person gain from participating in the challenge? Then we have our objective. Remember the reason why you do something is not the same information that you articulate to the person you want to participate. Right? So what do you want the challenge to accomplish? You want more people to use and buy more young living product, but you don't go out there and say, hey, I'm going to invite you to participate in a thing that will get you to spend more money with me. Right? That's not compelling at all. And it's not helpful on its face. So we do want to make sure that we're clear on what these two things are. What are they going to get that's important to them? And then of course, what are the mechanisms that we will create to accomplish our goals while helping them get what they came for? So in a challenge, we also have prescribed actions. So what steps are they going to perform each day? Communication. How will you show up and engage and remind them to take that action? Accountability. So how will they stay on top of their actions? That doesn't necessarily mean that they have to communicate it with you or with anyone else, but, but it is an option. And then another optional thing here is incentive. So how will they be rewarded for participating in accountability? Now we have two general options for challenges in Get Oiling. The first is simple and you could do this at any plan level in Get Oiling. Okay? This is simple and straightforward and it's using a campaign. A campaign, if you aren't familiar, is a system in Get Oiling where you have a series of messages that you have scheduled to go out at intervals, right? So you can have someone receive an email a day from you for 21 days, right? Or 28 days or 14 days, or however long you want it to run. So a campaign would be the mode of delivery and communication and accountability and everything for your challenge. So this would be fully automated. It's also great because it can be initiated anytime by a lead or a customer. So you could actually offer this as a lead magnet. So join my 21-day challenge and get this benefit by the end of it. And it's totally hands-off and you don't even need to communicate with anybody because they could do it anytime. This is particularly good for customers, but it's, it's also great for leads. So the, that interaction that you have is between them and the content and then you, which is optional, they can reply to the email. And then this is something like I mentioned, that works well for leads, but as well as for customers. So let's talk about some examples here. So a daily gratitude challenge is one that you could very simply set up and deliver via an email campaign. The stated objective here is to help a busy mom integrate a journaling and gratitude practice into her daily routine in 21 days. So this is for somebody, this is a mom who knows the value of journaling, but she is not good at keeping up with it. You are, and you're going to show her how to do it. All right. In 21 days, she is going to have a habit of journaling that's going to do all of the things that a habit of journaling and gratitude practice does, right? She knows the value of that. That's why she's signing up for it. She knows she wants it. She knows she wants the benefits of it. She just needs the help getting into specific action so that this habit actually sticks. You know how to do that? So you've created a challenge. Okay. Your objective is to help moms like her to realize the power of leveraging the limbic system with essential oils and to introduce the feelings kit and the premium starter bundle. That's what you want out of this. You're going to show her because you know how to integrate a journaling and gratitude practice using simple steps every day for 21 days. But what you're going to introduce to her in the process of that 21 days is the concept of of the olfactory system, right? Your smell, being able to influence memory and the creation of habits. She wants a habit. She's struggling to create it, right? That's what the stated objective is. We're going to help her create the habit she wants. But we're going to introduce to her inside of this, this context, some oils that are going to help her do better at this thing that she struggled with in the past. Right? We're positioning young living product directly inside of the solution of what she wants. Do you see how these things relate and how if we said, we're going to work on our feelings together, she's probably not going to be as interested in that. But if she knows she wants to journal and she's been struggling with it, she is going to love this, right? And she's going to be very open to whatever you introduce in context. So the prescribed action for this challenge will be for a daily routine of quiet time and journaling, starting with brief moments and then expanding this practice into maybe one that is a full 15, 30 minutes. Incorporating any kind of preparation the night before, maybe daily affirmations and of course, the use of oils. The communication, because this is a campaign, is going to be a daily email reminder with prompts for journaling, with tips and with encouragement. For accountability, we'll make a checklist for her that she can follow and check off daily for 21 days. And we'll invite her to respond to emails to interact with us directly. And then finally, the incentive will be if she sticks around and she completes the challenge, we'll offer her a free AFT session in the last email of a challenge campaign. Does this make sense? It's looking pretty good, right? You can go and create a challenge today that you can be offering 24/7/365. This obviously is for, the way I've written this is for a lead, but you could reframe this and make this be for a product or product line. You could offer this to your customers whenever you want to and they can interact with it whenever they want to. You don't have to run it live. It is something they can get automatically. And, and sorry, for those of you who don't know, AFT Aroma Freedom Technique, a lot of young living brand partners are AFT practitioners. It is a technique developed by Dr. Benjamin Perkis that incorporates certain exercises, affirmations, activities, along with young living essential oils to produce really great results. Worth looking into. All right. So if you want to create a similar challenge, first, you want to outline the journey from start to finish, right? So she is at day one, curious where we are. We're not going to go off the deep end on day one. We're going to gradually work our way through to doing everything we need to do to accomplish the objective, the stated objective of this challenge. So what are her daily action steps for each day or each week? And then along the way, what stories, anecdotes, tips or product mentions include links here or calls to actions to respond? Do you want to include? These are going to combine into your messages that you're going to be sending out in your campaign. You'll then want to create any resources such as checklists or guides, journals, et cetera, that you might want to create, like a PDF file. And then you'll create the campaign that you'll use to deliver your challenge using that outline. On day zero of that campaign, you'll set expectations. Here's what's going to happen over this number of days and your challenge starts tomorrow. Then from day one onward, you'll give information from your outline as you have planned and be sure to set a send time. So I've often find that challenges are really great delivered with maybe a prompt in the morning. Our default send time in Get Oiling is 5:00 PM US Central Time. So depending on where you are, that may or may not be a great time to send maybe an end of the day message, or depending on of course, where in the world you are, it might send at a different time. So just be cognizant of that. And you do, depending on your plan level, have the ability to modify the time of day it sends. And then finally, you want to create a landing page or a page to offer this challenge to apply the campaign to the contact on registration. So they sign up for it and the campaign starts sending right away. It's completely hands-off for you. Kay asks, how does this work with people who don't have the oils on hand? This is why it's really important to, to really be clear on what the both stated and sort of internal objectives are. Because if you know that someone doesn't have the oils on hand, then you want to make sure that what you're doing in the challenge is focusing more on, on just serving them and then showing them that, hey, by the way, you could really boost the results that you're getting by using this. Right? So it's positioning. We're not, so you can have challenges that are for your customers, where you can tell them at the outset, hey, if you want to do this challenge, you're going to want to make sure you have product A, B, C, and D. That's going to work really well for your customers. I don't necessarily recommend that approach in the same way for your non-customers, for your leads, because it is really important to, to help them understand why they should use young living products before, you know, you put the products in front of them, right? So if you're wanting to offer something to folks who don't have oils yet, consider making this like that journal challenge that I just gave the example for. You don't need to tell them to use oils today, which oil to use today, which oils to use tomorrow, to give them value. You're wanting to tell them what you know so that you can give them a result and then say, hey, by the way, one of the things that really helped me was this thing. And here's the link if you'd like to get it and feel free to respond if you have any questions. And here's the link if you'd like to get it and feel free to respond if you have any questions. So it's really just a way to showcase. And then they could always, because this is automatic, this is autopilot, it's evergreen, they could do this challenge again once they have the oils on hand. Or they could go opt into an entirely different challenge in your member area, for instance, um where you have more in-depth challenges based on product use in a dedicated fashion. Now let's talk about challenge options and Get Oiling, our option number two is an advanced option. Uh it's also a a rather leveraged option, meaning there's um a way to uh to really take automations and structures you build ahead of time and use them over and over and over again uh at a really um in a really great way for for your business and of course, for the people you serve. So this is a combination of automation and interaction. So if you've ever been a part of a challenge that's maybe in a Facebook group, for instance, uh where you've got folks who are interacting, maybe they're sharing screenshots or photos or whatever that might be. What we're doing here is inside of vaults and Get Oiling, we're replicating all of the good things of that and removing the more challenging aspects and creating a more powerful experience. This can be something that is evergreen or run for a set calendar uh set of calendar dates. So this would be if you want to run a live challenge. So if you know, for the month of uh December, you're going to run uh for the first two weeks uh fourteen day challenge. You could do that here. Uh you could obviously do that with a campaign as well, but you're going to get a better result in a live challenge by creating interaction. And that's the value of using a vault, right? So we'll use um and it'll be evergreen or we'll run it for a set of calendar dates. And then the content can be organized similarly to how you would set up a course or a program in Get Oiling. And the interaction can either be solo, meaning somebody could go through this on an evergreen basis by themselves, not as a group. Or you could make this group focused, including discussion and the ability for people to communicate with one another. And this works really well for both leads and customers. So an example of this would be um our stated objective in this case would be I'm going to help busy moms handle house cleaning in twenty minutes a day. So this is for the mom who is totally overwhelmed. Maybe she has a couple kids. Maybe she um has a job and a business. She's got a family. The kid's got things that they do. And she feels really burnt out and and struggles uh with stress because she likes for her house to be nice. She likes for it to be clean. Uh but she doesn't feel like she feels like she's always swimming in tasks, right? Always dealing with a pile of laundry, et cetera. So we are going to help her master this in twenty eight days, in twenty minutes a day for twenty eight days. Now, our objective is we're going to help mom get rid of some stress because the stress is part of what's contributing to this being an issue in the first place, right? So we're going to simplify what she's doing and what she's using. And we're going to help her get rid of some of that stress. So we're going to use the Thieves Household Cleaner and we're going to use the Premium Starter Bundle. Now, this example, you could actually offer this to your customers. And ahead of time, you could say you're going to want to get a bottle of Thieves Household Cleaner and you're going to want um everything that's in the Premium Starter Bundle. Tell them to buy it, or of course, if they're your customers and they've been around for any length of time, they probably have these products on hand. So we're going to make sure that she's got this taken care of. We're going to get our customers. We're going to serve our customers with this. All right. So we're going to tell them ahead of time that they need those products. So our complete simple daily habit stack is what we're going to do as our prescribed action. That's going to be, we're going to do steps one through five. It's going to take us about ten to fifteen minutes. And then we're going to spend an extra five minutes doing another something else, right? So we're going to do a a simple daily habit stack where we're going to do, again, those maybe five things that we do every single day. And then each week, we're going to introduce um systems for for main home zones. Right? And we're going to have her throw out all of the fifty different cleaners she's using. And we're going to show her how she can just use Thieves Household Cleaner to clean everything that she needs to clean in her house, exactly what she needs to set it up and the schedule that she needs to set up to get it done. And of course, if she's getting in the habit of completing that simple five steps every day, then her house is always going to be tidy. And then she can spend that little bit of extra time, maybe, you know, an hour a week to deal with those zones in her house so that things are always sparkling, smelling good. And we're going to talk a little bit as well about how she can incorporate some practices using the Premium Starter Bundle oils. Maybe we'll talk a little bit about how um lemon oil can power Thieves Household Cleaner to do other things, um how she should be diffusing lavender while she's cleaning because this doesn't have to be a stressful activity, et cetera, right? How many of you would love to take this challenge? Kay says she does. All right. Now the communication that happens for this challenge, it's going to be daily video content. We're going to create short videos that demonstrate um what this looks like getting done, uh talking about the different recipes that we're using, diluting thieves, et cetera. Um unboxing the Premium Starter Bundle, whatever it is that you want to do here. Um and then we'll send a daily text reminder to have her go into the vault and watch the video and maybe uh share her accountability step, which is uh to follow the checklist and then post pictures of what she did. So maybe take a take a shot of your bed that is made because you need to make your bed every morning. So take a picture of your made bed and upload that. That's your your challenge, right? Show us that today. And then the incentive will maybe be a drawing. At the end of the twenty eight days, we're going to hold a live drawing where we're going to give away product or product credit. Now, if we're offering this to our customers, then oh my gosh, this is worth, I mean, you could give away something really big here because the benefit of getting a lot of people enticed to get the big prize means that they are building product habits that are going to increase your monthly check anyway. So it's worth the investment of what you're giving away, right? So this all kind of works out. So this would be an example of how you could maybe serve your customers um using a vault challenge. Now, if you were to create this, you would, of course, just like we did before, outline the journey from start to finish with your daily action steps that you're prescribing, any stories, anecdotes, tips, mentions of products, links to products, and calls to action to maybe respond, whether that be in the vault or to you privately. You would create any resources, checklists, et ceteras, and the videos that you'll use. Then you'll create the campaign that you're going to send out on a daily basis using the outline above here. Day zero, you'll set those expectations, tell them your challenge starts tomorrow, just like before. And then day one onward, you'll add that information in from your outline, setting the send time according to when you want them to receive those reminders. And then you'll create a vault with an online class where you'll add those videos and any other appropriate pages, as well as a discussion room, if you want to use one. Then finally, you'll create a landing page or a page to offer the challenge and you'll add them when they sign up on this page. It'll add them to the vault when they register. Now, there's obviously a few more nuanced steps here and we do have in-depth training that we have done recently on this. Now, I talked about and gave a specific example here of running a book club with weekly live calls. But this works exactly the same for challenges. With or without the live calls, you'll find templates. There's actually page templates here. So if you want to have a live calls page, a a guide page that shows them how to get the most out of the challenge uh that you're running, make sure that you check out this training. And if you go to the Good Oiling Success Academy, go to live training and replays and type in the word challenge, you'll actually find this here. Um and it does have a resource bundle that you can take advantage of. All right. So let's get into some discussions, some life help and Q and A, starting off with Anna Connie uh who is running a challenge or is planning to run a challenge in Get Oiling and had some questions for that. So Anna Connie, I've got you able to speak here.
Hi. Good morning. Okay, so um I love you and I actually watched your video on the book club and you inspired me. And so I created a book club challenge. I'm in the middle of it. And then I decided to use the same template that I used for the book club to create a a challenge. Um so I I I've gone a long way since the last time we talked. I've rebranded. I I have my website now. It's annakonnywalters.com. Um and I've decided, I did some soul searching and I've now decided that my journey is to focus on on my own story and become what I've technically always been, which is a um stress management and um uh adrenal fatigue kind of advocate. So revive vitality. So I've basically taken Life Steps' recent Adrenal Challenge and created my own challenge that I'm trying to create as a live um challenge to start with for the holidays and then turn it into an evergreen product. Um and so literally what I did with the help of some of the support team was figure out how to create a resource bundle for myself to basically take what I had already created with um the book club and then copy it all over from the landing page, the confirmation pages and stuff. Um I originally had the question of, I was trying to figure out how to, so my idea for like what the incentive would be or what to give them is like a reward for finishing the thirty days of basically using two essential oils, which is nutmeg and energy. Um and then the third thing they have to do is just get sunlight. It's basically just those three things. Now, I purposely did it myself for a full month before launching this as a live challenge. Um and I feel fantastic. I definitely can tell um huge changes within myself of pretty much across the board. And so I was like, you know what? It'd be really great to try to capture this. And so you actually did a fabulous job in a recent training. I asked the universe for guidance and for whatever reason, sent the video you just did, I think like last week, about how to use a page to create a form um for like creating a question. My thing was is that when I try to do this as an evergreen product, was there a way to create that form to be more of like something that will seamlessly integrate into their contact? Because right now, what's going to happen is they get, they sign up for the adrenal challenge. I send them an email basically telling them to click a link to go to a pre-assessment page. So it's under my pages, under like adrenal challenge, pre-assessment.
Okay.
And so I created this based off of your training. Thank you very much. Because this is where I was stuck prior to this call. And so when they actually look at it, the form actually gives them all the questions that I'm trying to capture. Because what I wanted to try to do is, if you actually just view that pre-assessment like as a live thing, it should show you, oh, well, you're you're showing, yeah. Um. Yeah, that just takes them to, because by this point, they should already be accepted into the vault. That's why I just reminding them go there.
Okay.
Yeah, um because what I'm starting to see is that with the book club, it's really hard to get people to get into off the Facebook and into like my own personal, you know, site. So I'm just kind of consistently reminding people, you know, join it. But I'm making it accessible so that they really don't have to go into the vault to take part in the challenge because they get the thirty day email campaign that's basically set from one to thirty, basically. Um so it captures all the information, except if they go into the vault, they have a a thirty day video course from me really breaking down adrenal fatigue and everything. And so I got this far um with the help of your last video. So anybody who wants to try to do this, listen to this video you did last week. But I was trying to figure out, so when they fill this out, I get that it goes into their contact card. What I'm trying to do is at the end of the thirty days to have them repeat the same um questionnaire at the very, like during the last week, so that I can see one whether, because it it the first question is which of these categories do you want to most improve on? Which is the first question that they get when they sign up. So already have that. And then this question asks across the board of all the adrenal fatigue problems that you could have in terms of symptoms, where are they most struggling? So that at the end, I could be like, okay, so this is where you wanted to have the most improvement on. And based on your scores from when you started to when you finished, this is where you saw the most improvement, but it may not be what they were targeting there, like where they wanted their results to be. So at the end of the challenge, they get a free thirty day um Zoom call with me to go over their results, talk about their journey. And then I can then either recommend them more stuff or yoga practices or something in that effect um to help them on their journey. I just wasn't sure. It's gonna, I I feel like I have to manually take these results now and put them in the contact card as one of those measurable things so that they can see their own progress as a tracking kind of system. Is that really the only way I can do it at this point?
So that it's visible to them?
Yeah, so I wanted to be something where, so my, I was kind of going back and forth between do I do it myself, like manually for every person that joins the challenge? And then have them go into their dashboard and update it at the end themselves with new, you know, with the same um questions, same scale. Or should I should I create a duplicate basically that landing page with the quiz? Just take out the first two, you know, headers because it's, you know, by that point, we're already done with the challenge. And then have them fill it out again so that I have a second entry and then enter that second entry before my live call with them um was kind of my question.
Okay, so this actually introduces, I think, a really interesting idea for us to maybe um file away onto our wishlist.
Okay.
Which is to maybe correlate um form fields to the um the client progress tracker. That's not a thing that we currently have the ability to do. That is something that you would need to do manually. Or alternately, you would have to manually set up for someone in the challenge, their progress tracker to have those certain things, right? Um and then you could maybe do a quick video showing them how to um how to go in and make those modifications, should they choose. The most hands-off way for you to do this, because I know you said that this is something you're doing for free, right?
Yes.
The most hands-off way to do this would be to have that page that you showed, that or that I was just looking at with you, that initial intake, have that be what they get when they sign up, right? Or actually, it's it's where they begin. And then they get into the vault after that, right? So there the barrier to get in to get the con the information is to fill the form out, right? And then they get in, they engage with the information. You want to incentivize their engagement with the information and and really put some value into um that end assessment and that call with you that they can get. Um so then what you would do is either at an interval, and I saw you did put a a page into your vault. Um you could make that hidden. Just as an example, um you could make it like an additional like post, like a follow-up or midway through form or however you want to do it. You can have that be a hidden page inside of the vault that you send somebody to via an automation, for instance, after they have completed a certain lesson in the online class or after the online class is complete. Um and then you send them to that page where they fill that form out. Obviously, you've got some kind of incentive for them to. And if they have taken those steps uh to, you know, to actually fill that out, then you know that that's somebody who's serious, right? And so you just take a few minutes prior to that call that they maybe schedule with you after they fill out that form. Uh and then you can, you can just look at, you can compare those things together. Um and if if the goal is to get them onto a call with you so that they can see the value of that progress that they've made, so that they can make additional steps, buy additional things, et cetera, then um that's really just going to be giving you what you need to go into that call. Um that would be the way that I would do it if it was free. And that really rewards the people who are actually actively participating. It is um a little bit of work on your part, but that is the least um least administrative work option uh that I see.
Okay, so what you're trying to say, just to make sure I I understood, is that instead of creating a separate landing page for them to go to for the pre-assessment, include those pre-assessment questions in the actual um lead magnet um pop-up when they actually sign up for the actual challenge. So they have to fill those out then, instead of sending them an email with like, okay, here's your next step, buy these oils and then click here for your pre-assessment, because that's basically how I set it up now. But you're trying to say eliminate that. And then click here for your pre-assessment, because that's basically how I set it up now, but you're trying to say eliminate that.
So all all I'm saying is, is that you want to get the intake when they're saying yes.
Okay.
And then like kind of let the the sort of carrot, because every time you're trying to get somebody to fill out a form, you're getting them to do work.
Yeah.
Right? And we don't want to do work. And so we want to let them know that the the thing that they really want, it's just on the other side of this thing you gotta do. And so you go ahead and just place that there because they have motivation to get in and see the information that you've created. So that's going to, like, you're going to be able to borrow some of that motivation to get them to put that work in and get that that form filled out. Um and then and then there again, you're repeating that at the end. Uh you know, by saying, you know, hey, fill this out and we're going to be able to go over these results together and talk about the the progress that you've made and how you can make more progress.
Awesome, yeah, because you mentioned that in the video where you talked about how to create these assessments for coaching and stuff. And that was the idea, so I have a thirty day actual um course that I'm creating now. And towards the end, it's about basically taking now what they've created as a daily habit and just taking it a step further. And in that was where I was going to introduce the the post-assessment. And explain to them in video like, okay, so you've gone this far, you're doing amazing, I'm so proud of you. And I want you to take some time, you know, celebrate your victories and then, you know, take the assessment again. So that you can schedule a call with me and so having them get an email like, thank you for, you know, doing your post-assessment, click here to book a call with me now. And then that way I kind of capture them at the end and if people. You know, complete the course and don't do it, then it's less work for me, but that way I get, you know, valuable leads that actually will lead to hopefully a good conversation.
Yeah, that's right.
So it it's what you, I just kind of the beginning part wasn't sure where what was the best action, so that really, really helped. But thank you so much, this was fantastic.
Good, glad I could help, alright, well, hope you get some rest.
Yes, thank you.
For coming out.
Alright, bye.
Alright, Colette, are you here? Colette Jansons, I see you were signed up. I don't see you here, but Adrian, you signed up and you aren't here. I will go ahead and bring you out to chat, hi, how can we help today?
Hi, oh, excuse me, my voice just backed, um I'm doing well, how are you?
Uh improving.
I think I was catching your voice, um anyway, so I have a corporate client that um I'm working with. We I've done um, you know, a few in person and now they're looking for something more, you know. Keeping up with their practice um over Zoom, maybe bi-weekly. And there's like fifteen to twenty people who will attend. So I felt the best way to do this would be to um set up some sort of automation, so they get the Zoom links, et cetera, et cetera. And then offer as a bonus, not not permanently, because I may want to do something with the recordings, like the replays. Um it's going to be very short, like maybe twenty-five minutes. Um because they want some simple gentle movements and then the rest would be like fifteen minutes of yoga nidra. Uh this way they can do it in the office. While they're there, they have connection and then, you know, some of them do work offsite, so they may be able to connect also through the Zoom. So I did look at setting up a vault, but I'm still kind of, and I went through the course on the member course uh yesterday. But I but I saw that, you know, you put in links for videos, but can would that also work with Zoom replays?
I'm assuming. Oh yeah, absolutely, as a matter of fact, um there is a way, and I believe if um. I know that in the attract well version, we haven't updated this in uh in the get oiling um member area course. Uh but um here, let me actually just go in and show you.
Okay.
This is such a cool thing that you can do.
I know, I'm really excited because what I want to do, that's why I want to have the replays on um. Limited because I may offer the replays as a bonus or sell them or have them available for some other uh program as well.
Got you, so what you're going to want to do is in your Zoom meeting, so whatever your Zoom meeting is. When you're in the meeting, this is not something that you set up ahead of time, it's something that you need to make sure you do when you're in the meeting. You're going to choose record to cloud. And when you choose record to cloud, after that recording is processed, you're going to find it right here under my recordings.
Okay.
Now, there's going to be a little link here that will offer you the ability to click it. And have it transfer to your video library and get oiling.
Okay, perfect, yeah, well, right now, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I've been using um. A different Zoom, but since this one is. Um right in good oiling, I'm I want to set up the member area, I'll use the Zoom. I mean, I used to get oiling Zoom, I've been using the um. Live well, is that what it is that Young Living has um?
Oh, that was the one that they, I I think during the pandemic, there was a big.
Right, though I already have that.
It was like five dollars a month or something, yeah, I know.
It was ten dollars, but I have that, I have the base rate, whereas now if people do it, it costs even more, so I'm keeping it for now.
Sure, it's a good deal.
Yeah, so I figured I'd keep it, but I figured since it's going to, you know, I want to set everything up through the get oiling system, I might as well use. The Zoom through that, so if.
Yeah.
Um it goes into the recordings into the cloud, then I can just, okay, you would, you said upload it to the video, I mean.
That's right, yep, it you can move it, so it'll be in your Zoom recordings. And you'll actually get an email uh saying that your recording is there. And then you can, there's just a link you can click and it sends you straight over, sends the video right over to your videos.
Right, and then I can use that link to the video inside the member area vault, what have you, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so and then since this client will be paying me separately, this will be completely private member area.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I would just send them a link to join separately, I just want to make sure, because I've never, I never um. You know, I've been thinking about setting up a member area for certain things, but this will be the first time.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's really exciting, so that would be a vault that only your client and their employees uh would be able to access. Uh and so they'll be tagged in your system accordingly, and then you can add not just videos that are specific to what you're doing with them. But really any kind of bonus or supplemental videos that you wanted to include that might be in other vaults. Um you would be able to put those there too.
Exactly, that's kind of the intent as well, so, alright, and then um. So once you set that up, one of the, well, once I set that up, I can just. Follow through with setting up all the uh automations and what have you through the member area, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, and and if you're going to be doing any amount of live interaction, live calls. I definitely recommend checking out that training that I mentioned earlier and that Anna Connie was talking about. Uh having been through as well to create her vault, um and that is.
Again, can you remind?
Yeah, it's it's the one uh talking about book clubs and challenges.
Oh, book clubs.
It's a, yeah, so if we go to.
Maybe I overwrote it because it wasn't connect, you know, quite um exactly the same, but that may be a good idea.
Yeah, and and I actually, I think, talked through, like, when you're running the live call, that process, you can actually kind of see. You you go here, you do this, you do that, and you wind up with the videos. And Jolene uh mentioned here, like, is that maybe a better way to do videos for within the vault? It could be, so if you actually go and type in challenge, obviously today's video is going to show up here. Uh once we have it processed, but this one right here, using book clubs.
Oh, okay, I think I may have been a part of that call too.
I think so.
I will, I will go back to it and review it, and I started reviewing um some other links, but I found that the. The actual course for the member area was much more simpler for me, at least just getting the highlights.
Yeah, there there are a couple of pages there that you might find useful uh as um like as resource bundles that you can actually pull in. Uh and utilize if you want to.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Awesome, thanks for coming out.
You're welcome.
Awesome, great questions today, you guys, I hope you're so excited as we are about the new experience. Uh using get oiling, more the smarter, more beautiful uh way to move around and get things done. Um really, really exciting stuff, and Tina, I hope you just saw that uh where I was showing you, that is where those templates that I mentioned are. Uh so if you go to our success academy, you type in, um you type in uh challenge. You'll find that previous training on running book clubs. And essentially what that is, is a system as well as a template to help you with uh running a challenge inside of a vault. Or really running any kind of experience inside of a vault that has recurring calls, right? Uh so if you're going to be meeting on a on a weekly basis, you can actually use a lot of what's there for, you know, a customer group. Or a brand partner group, or really a coaching group, anything where you would be meeting on a regular basis for a set period of time or even an ongoing indefinite period of time. So I hope that this is really helpful to you guys, I hope uh that you were able to hear and understand me today. Um did not think to grab one of my thieves lozenges until like literally five minutes ago. Lesson learned, keep those on hand if you have to talk a lot. Uh Cornelia, the success academy is so cool, let's go take a quick look. Um it's right over here, under dashboard, success academy is right here. We actually uh went over this a few weeks back. Uh but it's where you can kind of get a feel for all the things that you might want to do for your setup progress. Uh there's actually a checklist here that you can follow. Um you can get live help, you can learn about ways to to get connected, we've got our courses here. Uh as well as a way for you to search for the content of our trainings like this one on our YouTube channel. And you can actually type in whatever you're looking for right here. So um thanks again, you guys, for being here, uh for being amazing, for being a part of this community. Uh we would not be obviously where we are, we have what we have if it wasn't for you. Getting out there and doing your best work and showing us how to serve you better. So we really appreciate the opportunity to uh to serve you, to be with you here, and we'll be back same time next week. Have a good week, everybody.